Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September twenty thousand twenty-two. This is the Board of Adjustment Study Session. Before we begin, let's talk about some upcoming or not not October, but it looks like we have several cases that may show up in November. The actually carrying date is November thirtieth. And as you can see on the agenda here, we have four cases for potential cases. There are projects. The first one deals with two unpermitted carports that were constructed years ago. New property owner is wanting to do some renovations and additions on the property and the unpermitted carports cater view. So the applicant will be requesting variances for setbacks for both of them. And there's one that's detached and it's located in the front yard. So they'll be requesting a variance for that as well. The second one is seven twenty North Avenue. This is a project where there is an existing building in the rear yard. The property owner would like to into a second dwelling unit and do an addition to it as well. But the the building itself is nonconforming for sex. But the addition now requires it to go through the variance process because it's no longer meeting setbacks. Third property that's potential for November thirtieth is at eighteen eleven South Carthage. And this has to do with a carport that was converted into a garage without permits. And so the applicant will be forward requesting setback reduction, which is essentially right now. It's looking to be at a zero lot line. The last potential case we would have for November is located at eleven thousand one East Old Spanish Trail. This is a new garage to be exceeding the building height and gross floor area allowed for the detached accessory structure. Number thirtieth is I was obviously it's going to be after Thanksgiving. So if you think or you know, you can attend the public hearing, please go ahead and let me know in advance so it can make sure that we do have a quorum. Because more than likely, we'll have at least one or two of these cases for November. Are there any questions on the first item of the study session agenda?
Not for me.
Okay. Before we get into today's case discussion, last evening, I emailed the study session should have included the approval protest map with the totals and the motion templates for the case being heard today. Did everybody email?
I did.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I assume everyone, everyone else received the email with so I'll go ahead and get started with today's case discussion. So the case we have before the board today is a two oh seven Tractor Supply Company. And the location is going to be at ninety-eight forty-eight East Old Vale Road. So this project is it's located on a parcel that's about five acres in size. It's close to the intersection of Old Vale Road and Houghton Road. So the applicant is here to propose the new building, which is the two Tractor Supply Company, which is a new rural lifestyle retail store. And the applicant is be before the board asking for two variances. The first variance is to allow the number of required motor vehicle parking spaces to be reduced from one hundred and sixty-two spaces to ninety-five spaces. And the second variance they're asking for is to allow the number of required long-term bicycle parking spaces to be reduced from nine to be reduced from nine short and four long-term spaces to six short and two long-term spaces. Planning and those are planning and development services staff recommends approval of the requested variances. As you can see, this site is located where it's located is along what we call a real corridor because there's a lot of large lots here that are industrial zoned. And initially, the location here is is targeting a specific market for this type of retail store. Lot of properties that are nearby this location would be rural in nature. And they may have horses, larger animals, larger property to maintain. So this Tractor Supply Company is in ideal location to serve that market. Now, because of this store, which is there's several thousand throughout the nation and stores in Arizona. So it's not just this store, but there's several other stores in Arizona. They all have almost the same model or prototype when it comes to the building and the design. This particular one is about twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eight in size. And the size of the the building, along with all the outdoors display areas contribute to the parking requirements. And so because the nature of this business, it's specific to that you may see on ranches or you know, to maintain those larger properties. So they they require a lot of space for their product, which obviously is going to drive the gross floor area and parking ratio up. I'm seeing a huge amount of parking spaces required. But in reality, they really only need you know, in this case, they're asking for ninety-five spaces, which is reasonable based on what they have shown in their application and what other stores have you know, shown as far as what is what parking works for them for those stores. So you'll see a large discrepancy between what provided and then what is actually being used in some of those stores located in Arizona. The applicant did show that in the that was very good information that he provided. Another thing that kept the applicant from meeting all requirements is, as you can see by the the site plan shown here on the screen, there's a large retention basin located at the south of the law. And there is also a lot of landscaping required. In order to maintain or to retain the storm water, they have to have this this particular side in on site. And so just so everyone knows that they they are meeting the requirements for water harvesting and landscaping on a it's just really the bicycle parking and the vehicle parking they're asking relief from, which is really reasonable. How the other stores in Arizona have operated and successfully operated without needing all those spaces. And a lot of these customers that are coming to Tractors Supply Company are going to be driving big trucks to load up their product. Tractor Supply also does offer veterinarian services for horses. So it's going to involve a lot of heavy equipment, tractor, you know, trailers hauling. So the need for additional biking spaces than what's already being provided staff doesn't feel it's really necessary. Everybody's going to be going to this location just because where it's at and close to I ten and Houghton Road and in the rural areas, a lot of people will be driving to this location. So there the rest for additional bike bicycle parking spaces is is something that is not necessary based on based on this store's model. Today, I've received any protest or approvals. The applicant did hold a a neighborhood meeting representative from Rita Ranch. I and one additional resident in the area attended the the meeting. I did not see any objections towards what Tractor Supply is requesting. Some of the questions dealt with lighting fencing. And I I can't recall what else they had, but you know, it wasn't anything that they were objecting to as far as the parking or bicycle parking. So with that, I'll go ahead and and wrap it up and open it up for questions from the board.
Well, I just want to ask to confirm what I believe to be the case. There there's no no protest that's been filed at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, I do have a question, and that is should we be inclined to approve the request? The approval would be was run with the land, would it not? And by that, I mean the approval would remain in place even if the current owners were to choose to sell it to sell the land to a third party who might be a commercial developer of a different type of of stores. Is that not correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. The the variances do run with the land.
Okay, is again, if we were inclined to approve, is there a way to restrict the approval to the operation proposed?
I'm not sure you can necessarily put a condition on the use of the what the proposed use is. I mean, we can, you can impose conditions that directly to what the variances are being requested. So if it's for reduction in parking, for example, in this case, you could you know, we can grant the variances subject to additional trees planted in this area or something like that for the parking. But it's got to be related to, there has to be a nexus between the condition and the variances being requested.
Okay.
Yes, Bruce Dawson, I have a question for Mark. Would that would that caring with the with the property that carries with the property? Driving around town, I see lots of buildings being torn down, you know, really, you know, substantial buildings, as a matter of fact. And so emptying a lot of lots with that that variance. It obviously is it's perfectly okay by me that this variance carries, particularly if they just buy the building and put another just different type of store in here. But it doesn't bother me all that much. But if somebody just came and tore this thing down and decided to put in a new property, wouldn't that then trigger reapprovals of various aspects such as parking, landscaping, yada, yada, yada?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mark, if I could follow up on that line of questioning one more bit. Again, if we're inclined to approve, are we approving a parking reduction for the specific parking calculation related to this specific use? So that let's say if there is a future sale and the future buyer would wish to put up a Dairy Queen, for example, which I presume has a totally separate and different parking calculation. Would the would they benefit by this this approval?
Not because that would that would be considered a change of views. So when you have a change of views, that new project or that new going into the space is going to have to demonstrate compliance with those parking requirements and any others requirements that's related to that use. So in this case, if it's a retail use and 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 this tenant leaves and then but it's it's also retail, then they have the variances in place for the parking. Does that answer your question?
I I think I'm comfortable with the information you've provided, yes.
Do we have any other questions?
None for me and for me.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I believe we can unless anybody else has questions, we can take a ten-minute break before we start the hearing.
Mark, I have do have one question, and I thought I saw it on the agenda. Were there items after this one hearing is completed? You've got other business. Is there any specific other business you're planning on dealing with?
No, Mr. Chair, those items under other business, that's always standard.
That's just a template.
Yeah, it's a template. So in case we do have the opportunity, you just it's there. It's always there.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Okay, let's go ahead. Mr. Chair, if we want to convene, I'm sorry, take a break and then we will start again at one thirty.
Very good. Thank you. Wish and your name and address in the chat feature. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience. And all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off unless you're addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk's office within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office. We're an attorney after today's public hearing. At this point, I'm going to ask city staff to raise their their right hands. And if you would, please do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I want to call the first case, the only case on today's agenda and turn to Mr. Castro and ask for his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Today's case is C ten dash twenty-two dash zero seven company, STNL Tucson SE LLC ninety-eight forty-eight East Old Vale Road I two. Applicant's property is an approximately five acre undeveloped lot zoned I two industrial. The applicant is proposing to construct a new rural like a real store. The applicant is requesting variances to reduce the required number of vehicle parking spaces and the required number of short and long-term parking spaces, all as shown on the submitted plans. The applicant is requesting the following variances. One, allow the number of repaired motor vehicle parking spaces to be reduced from one hundred and sixty-two spaces to ninety-five spaces. And two, allow the number short and long-term bicycle parking spaces to be reduced from nine short and four long-term spaces to six short and two long, all as shown on the submitted plans. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objection or adverse comments. Engineering Services Staff recommends approval of the applicant's requested variances. It is the opinion of staff that there are special circumstances applied to property that granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone which such property is located. And that the variances requested are the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of those U D persons which are in question. To date, we have received a total of zero protests and zero written approvals. And Mr. Chair, members of the this exclude staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Castro, I have no questions at this point. And since we're not hearing from any other board member that they have a question, I will thank you for that and ask the petitioner if he or she is present. And if that is the case, if they could identify themselves.
Hello, I am the applicant. My name is Garrett Howitz. I work for STNL Development as the Development Project Manager for this proposed Tractor Supply. So I'm I'm present.
Okay, let me ask you to raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you start by explaining your role? Are you a property owner? Are you one of the owners? Are you an owner's consultant? Not that it necessarily plays a big part, which is like to know who you are.
Yep, so I'm effectively the the project manager for this store. STNL is a developer, a preferred developer for Tractor Supply Company. We have been for a very long time. We are currently assigned to develop stores in Arizona, Nevada, and Utah. So if any tractor supply is going to be built in those three states, they would be at the doing of our team. So as of right now, I'm not we STNL is not the property owner currently. We have this piece of land under contract to purchase from Diamond Ventures, but we have submitted our development package and have gone through the approval process with the city and the anticipation and desire to construct a Tractor Supply store in this location. And we would assuming we would get to approval today, continue with the development package or development package process and then close on the land here in the next couple of weeks. So that is kind of the status and in my role and our company's role in in this project.
Well, why don't you proceed with your presentation and explain the use, the layout of the land and the restrictions that you're dealing with that cause a need for the variance?
Sure. Do I have the ability to share my screen in this?
Yes, you do.
Okay, awesome. I'm gonna like to share a a site plan as I think that might be a good a good visual and then I'll proceed with. Okay, let me know if you all can see my screen. Are you is everyone able to see?
Yes.
Yeah, awesome. So for those who are not familiar with Tractor Supply, they are the largest farm and ranch retailer in the United States. They currently operate over twenty-one hundred stores. And something that makes them unique is the fact that they have a lot of outdoor display area compared to the normal kind of your normal retailer, Tractor Supply customers kind of call it them. We call them hobby farmers. So people with you know, generally larger tracts of land, half acre plus, dogs, horses, goats, chickens. And they tend to our our customers. Tractor Supply is also a, we consider a destination retailer. Customers will travel anywhere from thirty to forty miles weekly to Tractor Supply locations to get products for their animals. They're and products to tend the land or property that they own. And the reason behind, well, I'll back up a little bit. Tractor Supply and STNL feel that the residents of Tucson would benefit greatly from a Tractor Supply store due to the some of the communities surrounding this specific site on Old Vale Road. Having larger tracts of land and having equestrian horse riding trails nearby, the Pima County Fairgrounds is also in close proximity to this site. So we feel that, you know, the residents will really appreciate having a store and that there's a lot of customers to be serviced in this location. But kind of going back to that, due to the unique nature of Tractor Supply and the products that they sell, they have a lot of outdoor display areas, which, as I kind of mentioned earlier, are not very common in it for a retailer. And a lot of zoning codes and zoning ordinances are not written with that in mind. So based on my experience and our company's experience, it's not it's not uncommon for us to sometimes request a parking variance because if outdoor display area is included, then generally, we have a lot of excess parking or a code would require a lot of excess parking with what Tractor Supply needs. So I'll kind of go over the site plan a little bit to kind of just show you the amount of outdoor display area and then I'll continue on. But the areas in yellow and green as well as pink are areas that they sell products outside. The area in yellow is what they call their fenced outdoor display. And it consists of very neatly organized products outside such as fencing, water troughs. And a few and a lot of other items and it's designed so that customers can drive in and a store associate can load these products easily. They have easy access to them because they're outside. There's more room to move around and load these products into a customer's truck or a trailer or a vehicle that they arrived in. And then the customer would then drive out of the fenced outdoor display area and leave. And you know, the the green area is also where Tractor Supply displays products, what they call their permanent sidewalk display area. And then upfront, you have the pink, this pink area, which is where they display pull behind trailers for customers to back into and leave with if if they purchase one of those. So there is a lot of outdoor display and sometimes people will say, well, you have a lot of you know, there's a lot of gross floor area to sell products like you 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 would think that you would need a lot of parking spaces because there's so much area for customers to shop into a lot of products for them to choose from. But in reality, that's not really the case. Tractor Supply has one of the highest average Uh, has one of the highest. Average trip. Uh, spends of any retailer, so they don't generate a lot of traffic. But the amount of money that their customers spend at each visit is generally very high. Um, that kind of goes back to what I said earlier about people traveling large dis- sometimes large. And long distances in order to reach their store. Um, as well as sometimes the products are are relatively large that they are purchasing as well uh from a size standpoint, so. Generally speaking, uh, the majority of the Tractor Supply stores that we develop are between sixty and eighty parking spaces. Um, we've only had, I believe, one store of the three hundred that uh STNL has built. We've only had one store really with over a hundred, so it's very uncommon for us. Um, and we tried to in order, we recognize that um the city of Tucson's. Uh, the way the code is written, that we were required to have hundred and sixty-one spaces. And we felt like in our variance. Requesting a variance would would make sense and would be appropriate because we felt like there would be a lot of excess parking. Um, that would be on the site if we could even. Uh, afford, if we could fit any of that parking on the site, which that was a whole different question, the size of our property really doesn't allow that. But we tried, um, and the site plan that's currently shown reflects the maximum amount of parking spaces that we feel we can fit on. On the the T S C site, uh. Uh, as it stands right now, so um STNL is requesting a variance for uh ninety-five spaces. For the Tractor Supply, uh, for this proposed Tractor Supply project. Um, that's the first part of our variance request. And then the second part of our variance request is to reduce the amount of bicycle parking. Um, for both short term and long term, we are still showing uh short term and long term spaces. Yeah. Uh, we are asking for a slight reduction uh due to the uh. Distance away from I I ten and also is kind of talked about earlier, it's very potentially very challenging. Uh, for customers uh to ride their bicycle to a Tractor Supply store, given the large. Many of the products being large in size, uh, difficult to transport uh on two wheels. Um, I think. Uh, I'd like to. Please stop my explanation of our, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, whether it's regards to. Um, this project specifically, STNL Tractor Supply, um. I appreciate everyone's attention and uh consideration for this variance request.
Well, thank you for that, um, I. Have, uh, this is Michael Marks, the chairman, I've got two questions I can think of at this point. Um, the first has to do with the table included in your application package. The table that uh refers to the. Number of spaces in other uh. Of other stores of yours.
Yes.
My question is, are all those stores essentially the same size?
Uh, the short answer is yes, um, the majority of track or all of Tractor Supply stores are either nineteen thousand square feet. Or uh twenty-one or twenty-two thousand square feet. Uh, in terms of actual building size, so those are the standard prototype. Uh, design slash sizes that Tractor Supply requires developers to build, so. Uh, yes, they would all be within, you know, one or two thousand square feet of building, uh, with roughly the same amount of outdoor display area as well. Uh, Tractor Supplies model is uh. Pretty much, it, there's very little deviation from store to store, so the sizes would on these this chart for these locations should be the same.
So one follow-up question to that, still on the same table. Uh, you've got one uh column entitled Cars and Parking Lots, so. Uh, these numbers supposedly reflect the actual number. Of cars in the parking lot at that point, but um. There's an asterisk there and there's reference to Google Earth, but it is a accurate way of looking at that table that. That's the number of, that's a snapshot in time. Um. Not necessarily uh representative of the uh. Number of cars in the parking lot at. Any other particular time or was there an effort to find a time? That you thought was representative of the high demand?
Yeah, so um. This is just a snapshot in time, um, the information shown under the Cars and Parking Lot column represents. Uh, the Google Earth image that is the snapshot of whenever the Google Earth image was taken. Um, on the aerial, so. I cannot technically attest to whether or not. Peak traffic hour or not, um, however. This is a question that we receive, um, and Tractor Supply tracks that information um uh from store to store and the peak hour of traffic. Peak number of cars or trips in an hour uh for Tractor Supply generally does not exceed forty. Uh, so although. I can't attest whether these numbers are during a peak hour or not at at any of the stores shown, um. It's very, very rare that any Tractor Supply would ever uh experience more than forty cars. Uh, coming and going within an hour uh in their parking lot, so. Um. But yes.
Let me ask this one uh further question, then I'll defer to the other board members. The site plan you were showing on your screen showed a forty foot roadway. Or maybe it indicated access easement on the east boundary. That's something that really is not shown on the site plan that we've been provided for and. And I'm wondering, is that a existing easement that was established by Platte or some separate instrument? And i- is that a easement that you're planning on building a roadway? On, and if so, where does that lead?
So that easement is would be established, it's not for the Tractor Supply property, um. The the site behind Tractor Supply, which I believe is lot twenty-two, um, has very limited access. Uh. To uh Old Vale Road, so that was an area that was uh. That we had tried, we designated uh for a future. Uh, a future neighboring lot to can or the essentially essentially lot twenty-two behind us to. Construct a roadway if it was ever needed in order to. Uh. Kind of further support any of the industrial uses that would go around us, um, so it was just. It was, it will be established for an alternate point of access for that property uh to the south Tractor Supply.
All right, I I think I'm satisfied with that, so um, that's all that I have for you at this point. Um, let me ask uh the other board members, do any have a uh question they'd like to ask the petitioner?
Yeah, Bruce Dawson, uh, yeah, Garrett, uh, I'm just curious on that permanent sidewalk display. How do you secure that during the night, or do you just haul it all inside? It's it seems like whatever you have out there might decide to walk away. Being so far out and everything.
Yeah, um, that's a good, a good question, uh, it's definitely up to the Tractor Supplies like Operations Team. To decide, um, sometimes they will tie tie everything up with ca- lock cables. Um, sometimes they will move product into the fenced outdoor display area. Uh, but that's really up to the T S C Operations Team to kind of make that decision, um. So that, that's what I've heard is done in cases that they feel that uh. The safety or um, there is a threat of theft in the area, then they will, they will take those measures. But I can't exactly speak to a method that they would use at this specific location if if any.
Oh, thank you, Garrett, that's all I have.
Sure.
Um, how about any other board members, any questions? I'm not hearing any, um. So I want to thank the petitioner and uh at this point, excuse him. And then ask, are there any other people in the virtual audience? That would like to speak either in favor or in opposition? I don't hear anyone. Um, you know, I didn't give the petitioner the opportunity to add any last comments if he had any. So before we close the hearing, um. If the petitioner has anything further and hopefully briefly uh to add. To make the presentation uh more complete, if uh he thinks anything needs to be added, this is the time. Otherwise, we'll move forward to the uh board deliberations.
I think the only thing I would say to wrap it up is uh, STNL and Tractor Supply feel that Tucson residents. Will really appreciate and enjoy having a Tractor Supply uh in this part of town, and I also want to thank. Um, all of the city staff for being uh extremely helpful, professional and accommodating. Uh, over the last couple of months during the development package review as well as the um. This Board of Adjustments process, so um, I have to say that. Uh, we bounce around from town to town, but uh this staff in Tucson is definitely one of the more professional, uh, most professional and. Um. Accommodating and detail oriented people that I've worked with, and I really appreciate that and appreciate all the help, given the fact that this is our first time. Uh, developing in Tucson, but uh. We would definitely be interested in potentially putting another Tractor Supply store in Tucson if if this one uh is approved, so. Um, pretty, thank you for everyone's time and I believe that's all I have on my end.
Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, it was a good presentation. Uh, let me turn to the board members, uh, and well, I should. No, let let's close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, or if any board member. Wishes to make a motion, this would be the time. Do I uh? Mr. any figures on that?
Mr. Chair, I have uh really no questions, um, uh, so I would like to uh. Take this opportunity forward a motion.
Uh, feel free to do that.
Okay, uh, in the case of Tractor Supply Company, uh. STNL Tucson SE LLC, uh ninety-eight forty-eight East Old Vale Road I two zoning. Uh, I move to, we grant the following variances in the case of C. Ten dash twenty-two dash zero seven. One, to allow the number of required motor vehicle spaces to be reduced from one hundred and sixty-two to ninety-five spaces. And to allow the number of required short term and long term bicycle spaces to be reduced from nine short. And four long uh spaces to six short and two long spaces. As uh all as shown on the submitted plans, subject to no conditions. Uh, and that the uh pardon me, uh. As subject to no conditions and at the variance, uh. Uh. Will not be material des- materially detrimental to the public welfare. Or injurious to other properties or improvements. Uh, in the neighborhood and is the minimum necessary to provide relief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dawson. Um, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. All the those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed say nay. Hearing none, uh, the motion passes unanimously. That completes that item and that completes the agenda we have in front of us today. Um, I will turn it back to uh staff for any closing comments.
Mr. Chair, staff does not have any other um items to go over.
Okay, then we will close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.